Okay, 5:30, we're gonna call the meeting in order. Let's all please stand.
Let's move to the side of the United States of America and to the Republican Republicans. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's night, I'm here, Don, Board Vice President, filling in for President Teresa Ray. She could not be in attendance tonight. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Yes, we do. We have a student recognition that is planned to honor an August graduate, but so we're waiting the student, correct, that's coming. So if it pleases the board, that's the only change to the agenda, other than noting that Mrs. Ray is excused and Mrs. McGara is also excused, but may be joining us on Zoom momentarily. If the board wishes, we can delay the presentation of the diploma and then go into executive session. It's a matter of personnel and property and litigation, and then we can exit and do the student presentation. Do you want to make that a specific item on the agenda then? I think we're okay, we just go to exec and then come out and then start the regular agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so I don't see the whole presentation will drop down. We will move executive session up to right now. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion.
Second by Dale, second by Brad. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I think aye. Now, we have a motion, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some motion?
Second.
Motion by Sue, second by Dale, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and property acquisition and litigation. And we will go into the library. Okay, so with your motion to come out of the executive session.
Second.
Second by Sue. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So before we move into the presentation, why don't we amend the agenda? To add the two items discussed in executive session, one on contractual, one on personnel. Or remember, you should have that in back there. All right, motion to amend the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What do you care? Two C. Okay, we are on to item C, the presentation of the diploma.
Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Wheeler, Mr. Brightstein, it is my great pleasure to announce and recognize three students, Isaac Brown, A.J. Sibley, and Crystal Victor Nozzi, who met New York State graduation requirements over the summer. A.J. and Crystal weren't able to make it tonight, but I'm excited to have Isaac here today in attendance at this board meeting. Obviously, the last year and a half has been extremely challenging, and it's an honor to acknowledge his accomplishments. Isaac overcame many obstacles and challenges to earn his diploma, and it's my pleasure to recognize his persistence and perseverance in meeting his graduation goal. Mr. Brightenstein, I'm happy to present Isaac J. Silencio Brown as a candidate for graduation and the awarding of his diploma.
So, Isaac, before I, you know, we can officially convey to you your diploma, I'm gonna give you the same courtesy that all of our graduates get, a very long speech from me. I did speak with Mrs. Ray earlier today, who was unfortunately able to be here, and she did want for me to express her extreme pleasure for you reaching this milestone, but also for all the students. So, congratulations to our three graduates, Isaac, A.J., and Crystal. You have reached a milestone, and you exemplify the characteristics of tenacity, grit, and have displayed a truly indomitable warrior spirit. While the pandemic may have caused some obstacles and some roadblocks, it did not deter you from achieving your goal. While the world around us is slowly, perhaps very slowly, returning to a new deficit of normal, you maintained your focus, you did your job, and you made it. We are proud of what you have accomplished, but also incredibly proud of the mountains that you will conquer when you leave us as a Salamanca alumni and all that you will achieve. These traits truly define a warrior. Your journey thus far has been directed by adults for the majority of your life, but after tonight, it is clear you have emerged as an adult, taking responsibility for your actions in the directions of your life. Henceforth, the decisions you make will be yours and yours alone. Take measure and stock of your integrity, protect your reputation, fiercely defend the people in your life that you love, never settle for second best, and always give your full measure and attention for whatever task is at hand. The future awaits you. How you proceed is up to you. Setbacks will undoubtedly occur, but I am certain, as you've demonstrated up to this point, that you have got this. And by chance of you stumble, turn to your family, turn to your true friends, and those individuals who love you and are with you tonight. So by the power entrusted to me by the New York State Education Department and the Board of Education of the Salamanca City Central School District, as Superintendent of Schools, I duly convey graduation status upon you, for you have successfully completed all requirements and fulfilled all obligations with pride, admiration, and respect. I hereby award you your New York State High School diploma. That was awesome. All right, let's move along. We have item number five, recognitions and presentations. We have school safety and real.
Let's see, that is me, thank you. Good evening. Over the past two weeks, the region has seen a slight decrease in the number of positive cases of COVID. Our schools are operating at a pre-pandemic operational number, meaning we have nearly all of our students on campus participating in in-person schooling, as well as extracurricular and athletic events. We currently have just over seventeen students who are quarantined due to exposures. That number fluctuates, is a little bit lower today than it was last week, and we have several students who are returning to school in the next two days, so that number we anticipate will go down again. One thing that I'd like to take a moment to restate is the importance of staying home when ill. This is especially important for vaccinated individuals who may feel a sense of protection. Many of our staff members who have recently tested positive for COVID are vaccinated individuals, and some came to work that might have had a headache or just a sore throat. This is how COVID is presenting in many of our vaccinated grownups. While we're struggling, like many districts, to find adequate substitute teacher coverage, I encourage and ask that our staff, please stay home and keep your students home if you are ill. With regard to the New York State mandated testing, the district is currently working with affinity testing to provide tests for those employees who are not exempt from the testing requirement. More information will be coming out in the very near future as we develop a logistics plan for the administration of this weekly required testing. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of our dedicated teachers, leaders, and grownups who make Salamanca a great place to learn and work. Thank you.
Any questions on the presentation?
Are we looking at possibly testing the vaccinated as well?
Thank you for bringing that up. At our district's safety meeting about a week and a half ago, or maybe two weeks ago now, one of the questions came up regarding vaccination for all. And since we're seeing numbers that would indicate that we are, what, seventy percent unvaccinated or testing positive? That tells us about thirty percent, if not more, are vaccinated that are positive. And an individual who is vaccinated and has symptoms, even though they're mild and actually an individual technically that does not have symptoms, is still able to transmit the disease. At this point in time, the district does not have a plan in place. One of our concerns with regard to that is, A, the logistics of getting everybody tested every week, but at the same time, the availability of the tests. So that's not to say that in two weeks, as we determine the logistics are feasible and that the testing is available, that the district safety team or the board, for that matter, can't make that recommendation and we follow through with that. But due to those two limiting factors right now, that's not necessarily part of our operational plan, but it can be once we have adequate number of tests and have a plan in place that has been a little more tested, that we'll be able to test. And we have options with that, right? I mean, we could say, or just have it open for optional testing for people who are vaccinated. We could say fifty percent. So that still, I think, needs to get fleshed out a little bit more, but that's not off the table by any means.
Just as an update with the opting out for testing is, you know, we reported, we have slightly over four hundred active employees. And when I say active, I mean individuals who are approved to work or who have been approved to work, but not all of those four hundred individuals are actually actively working on a regular basis. Some of those subs haven't worked yet because they have other commitments, but they want to be on their subbing rosters. We have other individuals who have been approved in the past as coaches that are still on our roster, but may not actually be coaching. So we did do a deeper dive into this data over the weekend and the latter part of last week, and we're down to a little less than a hundred staff members whose vaccination status is either they have already declared that they are not interested in being tested or getting vaccinated, excuse me, and that they will opt in to be vaccinated. And we have other individuals that we know have been vaccinated, but have not been able to locate their card and are working through that process. So we've gone from about fifty percent of our staff uncertain as to what their status is down to about twenty-five percent. So that's a marked improvement of us just going through and touching each of the individual employees, having a conversation with them to just get a little bit more information. And again, I want to be perfectly clear. If an individual chooses to get vaccinated, that's their choice. We are not at a point of mandating vaccinations. We are, however, required by the state to determine, once our testing protocols are approved, once we have a vendor in place, once we have a process to weekly test, we will need to do that. We are not quite there. There are a few districts in our VOSEs who have started testing and are working through either their own individual resources or working with affinity. I would expect those weekly protocols to begin probably within the next two to three weeks. Any questions? No. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We'll move on to number six, communications. First is public communications in the word title six, current right of review. So, one of the things that we've done is Janet is checking that. So just as a reminder, for persons wishing to address the board, although it is not required to do so under education law, the board does wish to allow residents of the school district the privilege of expressing themselves on an agenda item that are concerned to them, provided is that any such remark does not involve personalities, is directly related to an item currently under board discussion. The person wishing to make any such remarks is a bona fide resident of the school district, and we will ask any individual who does speak to give their name and at least street address. The person will state their name and address. Public participation shall be limited to items enumerated on the agenda. Such items and time should be limited to a total aggregate of fifteen minutes. Any individual recognized by the school board shall speak for no longer than three minutes, and an individual from the district will be designated to follow up with the speaker. So Janet, is there anyone interested?
Yes, we have a Bobby Dohner that signed in to two on.
You have Bobby Dohner?
That would be me. And why I am here tonight, and then there's because I have three children in the school.
Could you say your name and address, please?
My name is Bobby Dohner. My address is 363 Wildwood Avenue, here in Salt Lake.
Thank you.
Why I am here is because I have three children in school that are currently riding to school bus 137. And they kept complaining to me because they're being pushed into the same seat, all three of them, which may not be a problem if you have prospects, school bus, or school students, but not fit into the same seat, all three of them with backpacks and guitars, band instruments, and themselves. I contacted the bus garage and spoke with Bob, and he told me that it is COVID restricted, that all households have to sit together, apparently, even if they don't fit in the same seat. And I told him that I would appreciate it if he would switch that for me because my children says there's four of the seats on the school bus that nobody's sitting in. He said that he was gonna look at that, and then two weeks later, still wasn't putting care of us, I called back. He did not like that. He swore at me, he hung up on me, so I called the superintendent of the school. And when I talked to the superintendent of the school, he listened to what I had to say. He also told me that it was COVID restricted, that all three of them have to sit in the same seat because they all come from the same household. I told him that it was a safety issue, that they all three cannot sit in the same seat because the bus seat is thirty-eight inches wide, the bus seat. My children are wider than that. And I asked for one of them to be moved to a seat that was empty or that was in the same neighborhood as us because they all play football together. They hang out on the block together. And so he informed me that I am selfish for wanting to risk the health of fifty other school bus students for the comfort of my children. I told him again, it was a safety issue. And what if there was a bus accident and my children were potentially thrown from a seat because he doesn't fit in the seat? He's on the edge of the seat. And he suggested that a meteor was not going to come down and crash into the bus. The whole entire time I was speaking with him, he kept calling me Bonnie. My name is not Bonnie, my name is Bobby, and I've corrected him multiple times, at least ten times. But please not call me Bonnie, my name is Bobby. I asked him that obviously we wasn't getting anywhere, and I wanted to come speak with somebody who might listen to my concerns for my children's safety for not fitting into the school bus seat, all three of them in the same seat. He told me that he did not know when the school board meeting was because he did not have a calendar in front of him, when I'm sure he was sitting at his desk where there was a calendar. So we went around with that question for some time before he finally told me that easily a school board meeting is the first and the third Tuesday of every month. That seems like something that the superintendent should be able to tell me without looking at a calendar. I don't appreciate how I was spoken to by the bus garage supervisor about the safety of my children. And I don't appreciate how I was spoken to by the superintendent of the school about the safety of my children. They do not fit in the same seat. I want them out of the same seat. And apparently, they moved them that day because I threatened to go on the school bus and make sure that they were not in the same seat for their safety. I don't know what I expect to be done about this situation and suffer that they get moved to someplace that is appropriate for them. But I think it was totally disrespectful and not right of the superintendent to react that way. And he informed me that there will be comments from the audience that I would have to answer. So is there any comments from the audience about the safety of my children? Mr. Bernstein, do you have a comment?
Not just I know. Well, I don't know both sides, but it doesn't sound like there's a reason why the child has to sit three in a row.
Me neither.
Especially if there is
Four extra seats.
Well, not only four extra seats, but they don't all fit.
Correct.
I mean, you know, I don't know both sides, so I can't really answer why. But to me, you have a I just don't see what, why this is an issue.
I don't understand why I had to go this far either. I don't understand why they just couldn't correct it at the bus garage. This incident's been going on for a month. My children have been asking me to please get their seats switched for a month. And now I'm finally here, and I don't feel like I should have to take that for the safety of my children because there could very well be a bus accident, correct?
Thank God there hasn't been, but there
There has been in this school district. Thank God there hasn't been one with my kids on the school bus. And I'm sorry for whoever's children were on the school bus when it's happened, but it's happened here. Plenty of time. But thank God that meteor didn't come crashing down on their school bus. And now I'm just feeling with anger and frustration, so I don't want to say anything anything more than that.
Thank you for your comments. One of the things is, board members, we typically don't hear this type of stuff until it goes to this level. And honestly, it's probably the first time we're all hearing this. One of the things that it sounds like a standard rehearsed response is, well, okay, do it. That's the reality. We don't talk to the bus drivers routinely, we don't talk about these types of issues routinely. So when we do get a complaint, I thank you for coming and voicing your concerns, absolutely. But on our end, we do have to find out the facts. We just heard your side of the story. For us, it's a matter of talking with our administrators, who are going to talk to the bus driver supervisor and also the bus driver. So we have everything at our disposal when it comes to information at hand. Safety is always a concern. It's always been that way, and always will be that way. So we definitely want to address what we can. But again, I do thank you for coming.
I've never spoke with the bus driver. There's never been a with the bus driver. I figured it was never his all or doings, and I own this problem superintendent and supervisor of the bus driver.
I think it follows the same protocol as your kids in class. If you have a problem in class, you start with the teacher. If you have a problem on the bus, you start with the bus driver. That's my personal thoughts on it. And then you work your way up. Well, right now, you're at the highest form, so you will get a response.
Thank you, Bobby, for coming forward and speaking. It takes a lot, it really does. Well, I will always advocate for my children and their safety.
As you should.
Very good.
I think we got an email on this, and I thought, and I wrote on the what is the big deal about a kid not getting into another seat? I mean, it just does not make sense to me, the whole situations when there's seats available.
They shouldn't take up the whole backseat of my car, so there is no way that they fit into one school bus seat.
If I had a brother and another child in my family, they wouldn't have been on one seat either.
And I don't know if texting messaging is appropriate, but then he started sending me messages about when four of you were
Who sent the messages, Bobby?
I did.
You did?
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
For Title VI, do we have any representatives on Title VI? Other than myself? I will give a, just a quick update, Title VI. We did have the Title VI, there is committee elections. And we held a meeting and we reorganized Title VI committee. So just to give you all of the information, Sharon Ray has been elected as chair. Carrie John, me, has been elected as co-chair. Lisa George has been elected as treasurer. Jerry Jimmerson has been elected as secretary. We have Anthony Solomon and Tammy Jimmerson, both alternates. We have Jackie Kraus, Cheryl Tom and Tamara Bowen as our community representatives. Mindy John was elected as the teachers representative. And Sydney John was elected as student representative. So that is the new makeup of our Title VI committee. And there is another meeting next Wednesday in this room at six P M. Meetings are open to anybody who wants to go. There's a lot to talk about, a lot going on, and it's just another forum and vessel for parents of the community to see what's happening in the schools and those concerns. And get involved. So again, Title VI at six, next Wednesday. Next, we have some central office message.
Karen is not on the call.
Mark, what do you got for us?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, let's move into more vacation message. Brad?
I want to say congratulations to the recent graduates.
Jess?
I'll second Brad's wording. I want to give a big congratulations. You can feel the emotion. It was a big moment and I'm glad they were here to share it with everyone, you know? That's something they get to take with them, you know? It wasn't the usual celebration and fanfare, but having all of us here for that, I could feel it from the family, so all of us were part of their memory today, so thank you. Congrats to the other two graduates as well. Maybe they catch this message later, so congrats.
I agree with that. That's an accomplishment to stick with it and come to a special board meeting. That was a great honor for the family and I'm very proud of him.
Dale? I also want to say, congrats to our three most, most recent graduates. It takes a lot of grit and tenacity to make it through, especially in the times of adversity like we've had the last couple of years. And I just want to say, say congrats.
Why not say it too? Congratulations to the August graduates. It was, you know, like Dale said, it takes a lot for them to go back and to finish it and get the degree. They can just always say the heck with it, but no, I agree. It takes a lot for them to do that and a big congratulations to them.
And I'll, and I'll a couple of sentiments as well. Congratulations to them all. You know, starting to see that two of them couldn't make it tonight, but it was awesome to witness that. Every graduation I've been to has been pretty awesome. You know, it's always a moment of pride for everybody. Pretty cool. I'm wondering if that's why T-Ray didn't come to the meeting because she knew a picture was gonna be taken. And she didn't warn me either. But, um, no. Well, yeah, that's, that's an awesome milestone. And that's all I had.
So I have a couple of items and I appreciate the parent coming and speaking to us today and I will respond that much of what she said did reflect some of the conversations and the difficulty that she was having with transportation. We have added additional drivers and are currently in the process of rerouting some of those buses that have additional concerns with student spacing on the buses. I can confirm that there are vacant seats on the bus, but that will violate our reopening policy. It's not that we're unsympathetic to that, but that does cause us to either reroute buses or violate our opening policy. And so there is some concern. I did speak with Mr. Finch about it tonight. This afternoon, and he did confirm that he is just a matter of a day or two or three away from having the driver fully ready to go, be trained, and then they will be spacing the kids out to the extent that they can move them on the bus without creating a safety hazard if there are vacancies on the bus. They have been doing that to comply with their reopening plan and to keep the kids safe. It is very frustrating and I will confirm, as I did apologize to Bobby, I did call her Bonnie during the phone call, but I was driving back from Saratoga to come back into Western York Island State Council. So I will follow up with her and I appreciate her coming into the board meeting. That's, does take a big deal. I do take that seriously. Particularly when there is a criticism based on district administration and district operations. And it would never intentionally do my intent to irritate or cause a parent or a student any concerns on transportation. So I will follow up with her tomorrow and get an additional update from Mr. Finch regarding how close parents are rerouting those kids. So I do appreciate her coming in. The last item, if I may jump ahead later on into the agenda, we did add an agenda item on for the purpose of personnel, so if the board will indulge. I would like to read this. Dear members of the Board of Education, with bittersweet emotion, I would like to inform the Board of Education of my intent to retire a superintendent of the school district effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. It has been my supreme pleasure to serve in this capacity since two thousand and eleven. When I reflect upon the work that we have collectively done over the past decade, I am deeply appreciative and grateful to have been part of the renaissance of our school district. I've been part of the education world in some capacities since first entering a practical placement in nineteen eighty-six, and I have loved every moment of my journey, but I've loved my time in Salamanca the most. The early days were challenging and surely the world we live in today is also challenging. But we can take comfort in knowing we have mutually built a model where we collaborative and work together, share a common mindset that nothing is beyond our reach with graduation rates at historically high levels, increased opportunities for advanced placement, college credit bearing classes for our students, beautiful modern spaces, ample resources to support families and a solid level of trust with their community. For me, it is time to pass the baton. While I may not have been born a warrior, I am honored to have been allowed to become a warrior. And for me, this shall never change. With deep respect and gratitude, Robert Bernstein.
Doesn't seem possible. You told us what, two and a half years ago? You were gonna be retiring now and it just, I still can't believe.
We're all older, whether we like it or not.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Well, it's been a good run, Bob. Thank you. Well, move along. We have number seven consent agenda. A, approve for vacation meeting events as September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. We have our financial items, B, C, travel conference overnight trips, D, CSE recommendation, E, EPC recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Second by Brad. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, we have old business. We have policies. Being resolved and upon the recommendation of the superintendent, following a second reading, the following policies be approved. One, policy sixty-one twenty equaling one opportunity. Two, policy sixty-one twenty-one sexual harassment in the workplace. Three, policy sixty-one fifty-one drug-free workplace. Four, policy sixty-one seventy fingerprinting clearance of new hires. Five, policy sixty-five fifty-one family and medical leaveback, F M L A. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Sue. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will be carried. We'll go on to number nine, new business. Item A, we have a contract with the Seminarian Nation of Indians Head Start. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Seminarian Nation of Indians Head Start Agreement to provide U C K services up to and no less than twenty children from the district that the Seminarian Nation of Indians Head Start Program for the twenty twenty-one school year be approved and the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement. I'll move. You have a motion by Sue.
Second.
Second by Barb?
Oh, no.
Yes. Oh, Jessica, sorry. It's the mask. Are there any questions? Oh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, donation from Edna's Grad and Goal. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the donation from Edna's Grad and Goal in the amount of two thousand fifty dollars be approved and a letter of appreciation be sent. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brad, second by Sue. Any questions?
We will put this fund, as we've discussed, into a family support fund for unmet needs of students and the social workers and, excuse me, our family support workers and our director of exceptional education and Native American service provider coordinator, Ms. Reddy, will assist with allocating those needs.
Can you be honest? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will be carried. Item C, declare surplus. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following item be declared surplus and be properly disposed of. Be approved. Number one, wooden chairs, fifty-five. Two, wooden benches slash couches, four of them. Three, Texas instrument calculator, one of them. Four, foodie film digital camera withstand, one of them. Five, mechanical drum, yes, fifteen of them. Six, a wooden table, one of them. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Barb?
Second.
Second by Jess. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will be carried. Okay, item D, be we standing committees for twenty twenty-one revision. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education Standing Committees for twenty twenty-one school year be revised with additions and revisions as listed below and be approved. Finance and buildings and grounds and transportation, alternate Jessica Kraus. Indigenous Education Committee, Jessica Kraus. Curriculum Study Committee, District Comprehensive Educational Plan, Jessica Kraus. Strategic Planning Committee, Jessica Kraus. Policy Review Committee, Jessica Kraus. Visitation Committee, Jessica Kraus. Allegheny Keteragus School Boards Association Delegate, Dale Colton, alternate Jessica Kraus. NIZBA Legislative Liaison Voting Delegate, Delegate Sue Freeze, alternate Jessica Kraus. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any questions?
Know that before you sign up.
You're gonna be busy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, will be carried. Item E, change orders. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following capital building project change orders be approved. Change orders, P three point two, change order E C twelve, trailer house, electrical cord, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars fifty-eight cents. P three point two, change order E C thirteen, trailer house, electrical cord, two thousand four hundred twenty dollars seventy-six cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second by Barb? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will be carried. Okay, this is where we have our Alright, so we have added item five on this new business. Contractual services. Resolved that the Board of Education on the Salomon City Central School District hereby approve the settlement of the North of Queen dated July second, twenty twenty-one by hunt engineers, architects, land surveyors, and landscape architects, V P C as presented by the superintendent of schools and hereby authorizing the superintendent of schools to execute on behalf of the district a settlement agreement implementing the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Brad? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carried. Okay, moving on to item ten, personal consent agenda. A, we have personnel action. And I'm not gonna read all of those. You've got one that is on the call. Alright, we have a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will be carried.
Bob, we have. So, yes, we do have one of the homeschool coordinators on with us online, Jen Childs is coming to us, filling the role of a homeschool coordinator. I want to read some of the comments. The interview committee had noted that Jennifer is a valued member of the family school, homeschool coordinator and family liaison program in the district. And tonight she is up for permanent appointment, completing her probationary appointment. She is a strategic thinker, well organized, demonstrates exemplary communication skills with the family in which she works. She is self-directed and an excellent problem solver. She values people and forged strong positive relationships with others, whether they're coworkers or the family or the students that she serves. So congratulations, Jen Childs, on your permanent status this evening. Congratulations. Do not believe we have other, any other individuals that are here with us tonight. Administrator Dr. Miller, if I'm missing anybody?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, next we have Trevor Revised Agenda, the item ten, personal consent agenda. We have item D, retirement. Being resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Robert J. Ridenstein as superintendent of schools for the purpose of retirement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two be approved.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any questions? Well, I would just like to say, Bob, you're right. It was a rocky start or very strong. And I for one was glad to work with you for all these years.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We have how many months before you enjoy the sunset?
I don't know about enjoying the sunset. That'll be, that'll be a conversation with Mrs. Bernstein. Alright. Well, after that, we have item eleven, board information reports discussions. We have several policies, looking at second reading. We have policies looking at first readings. We have a list of upcoming events. A lot of events. October eleventh, Indigenous Days School is closed.
October eleventh, Indigenous Day, school is closed, uh. We have a finance committee meeting, uh, next Tuesday. We have Indigenous Education Committee meeting next Wednesday at four o'clock. Followed right up by our Title VI meeting at six. So we all remember that Title VI at six. Uh, that Board of Education meeting will be on the nineteenth and there's a lot more events on there. Take a look at them. So. Yeah, I have a motion for a meeting. Nope. Motion by Brad?
Thank you.
Second by Dale? Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Opposed? You carried the adjournment. Thank you, everyone.